Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. I will officially call to order the annual City of Portland budget hearing. Good morning. My name is Harmony Kidos. Nice to see everyone again. I am the Chair of the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission. The TSC— as a reminder, the TSCC is a community oversight commission established by the Oregon Legislature more than 100 years ago. The commission oversees the budgets of all TSCC member taxing districts and annually conducts a thorough budget review and certification process. In addition, the TSCC holds public budget hearings like this one to engage with district leadership and provide additional opportunity for public comment before budget adoption. I will now ask my fellow commissioners and the staff to introduce themselves and state if they have any business relationships that could be perceived as a conflict of interest.
Sure.
Let me start. Yes, good morning, commissioners. My name is Todd Burton. This is my first year on the TSCC. I have no business relationships with the City of Portland, although I am a proud alumni of both the Bureau Environmental Services and PDC, now Prosper Portland.
Hi, everybody. Good morning. My name is Allison Lugo-Napp. This is my first year as a TSCC commissioner. I also have no conflicts with the city.
Good morning. My name is Mark Wabold. This is my eighth and final year with the TSCC. It's been wonderful learning from them and from you. While I was working, I was just down the street. I was a senior analyst in the President's Office at Portland State. I have no conflict of interest with the city.
Good morning. My name is Matt Donahue. It's my third year as Commissioner on the TSCC, although first time I've had the pleasure of attending this hearing with the City of Portland. My day job is as a municipal advisor or investment banker for state and local governments, and I currently do not have any business relationships with the city.
And then I can just introduce our staff. Our Executive Director Allegra Willhite and our Budget Analyst Tony Bechart, they'll join us a little later for recommendations. Again, I'm Harmony Kidos. This is my sixth year with TSCC and my third year as Chair. When I'm not TSCC-ing, I work in K-12 curriculum and assessment. I am a former teacher, and I have no conflict of interest with the district. Would Mayor Wheeler, would you introduce yourself and anyone who's going to join us today?
Yes, Ted Wheeler, Mayor, City of Portland.
Thank you.
Let me start. Hi, folks. My name is Mangus Maps. I'm one of your Commissioners on Portland City Council. I think I've been here for about three and a half years, and on council, I am your Commissioner in charge of infrastructure issues. So I have the Water Bureau, Environmental Services, and PIBOT. I'll turn the floor over to my colleague Carmen Rubio.
Hi, everyone. I'm Commissioner Carmen Rubio. I've been here at the same time as my colleague Commissioner Maps, three and a half years. My portfolio is a community and economic development.
Rene Gonzalez, Commissioner of Public Safety. Been here about 18 months.
Hi, Commissioner Dan Ryan. I have the pleasure of being here just a few months before my colleagues Commissioner Maps and Rubio, September of 2020, and I am the Commissioner overseeing Vibrant Communities, which is parks, arts, and children's lobby.
Great. And then staff can introduce themselves if they are going to join us or speak.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. We'll start—we just want to acknowledge the district's receipt of the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its fiscal year 2324 adopted budget book. That helps us. It helps the public when there's a clear, transparent presentation of the budget. We'll start with introductory remarks from the city, after which we'll hear public comment, and then we'll ask our questions and discuss the budget with you.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thanks, Chair Kidos. Again, my name is Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Portland. Mark, I want to thank you for your years of leadership. It's been great to have you all this time, and I look forward to seeing you in whatever your next capacity will be, but thank you for your longstanding service. Good morning. I'm pleased to join the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission Board and Staff along with my colleagues this morning. Over the course of the last several years, I think it's obvious to everyone in this room that Portland has faced numerous unprecedented and overlapping crises: a rapid increase in unsheltered homelessness, rising rates of crime and gun violence, livability issues related to litter and graffiti, and of course, the strain to our economy in the wake of the pandemic. Portlanders remain crystal clear that they expect to see solutions on our streets, and they have. In response to these challenges, my colleagues and I have invested in new systems and new programs to address the most complex challenges facing our community. We're seeing success from these programs, and my view is we need to continue to build on that success. Despite the complex crises, the ongoing government transformation work, and the budgetary challenges, my proposed budget for the fiscal year 2024/25 builds on the momentum that we've achieved in meeting the most critical needs of Portlanders. With regard to public safety, the Citywide Portland Insights Survey clearly identified public safety as one of the top priorities for Portlanders. This is the largest public safety budget that has ever been proposed by the City of Portland. The Portland Police Bureau, Portland Fire and Rescue, the Bureau of Emergency Communications, Portland Street Response, the Police Vehicle Theft Task Force, the Focused Intervention Team, the Enhanced Community Safety Team, the Office of Violence Prevention, Rose City Defense, Summer Ceasefire, and more will continue leading the way to a safer and more livable community through this budget. With regard to homelessness and livability, this budget formally establishes Portland Solutions as a program in the City Administrator's Office. Our Safe Rest Village Program, the Temporary Alternative Shelter Site Program, the Impact Reduction Program, the Public Environment Management Office, and the Street Services Coordination Center will all operate under one umbrella to enhance coordination and service delivery citywide. Many of these programs were piloted during our 90-day resets. Now is the time to ensure that they are memorialized in the city's structure and can be taken citywide and extend beyond this budget cycle. With regard to economic recovery, our work to support economic recovery across the city is bolstered through this budget. This budget establishes the Portland Permitting and Development Bureau, or PP&amp;D. This is an historic move to streamline the permitting process for housing developers, business owners, and homeowners alike. This budget also supports the Events Office and establishes the Office of Small Business within Prosper Portland, improving entrepreneurs' access to repair grants, technical assistance for business development, and permit navigation. With regard to charter transition, this budget, of course, will span both forms of government, with the current council executing the first half of the fiscal year and the newly-elected mayor executing the second half of the fiscal year. This budget funds the new management structure, the physical infrastructural changes and the onboarding required to ensure the city and its incoming electeds are ready for business on January 1, 2025, just as the voters wanted. The Portland Clean Energy Fund. I'm thankful that we were able to match a specialized funding source like the Portland Clean Energy Fund with appropriate projects within city burrows to facilitate critical climate work that Portlanders want while also funding other city priorities. This is, of course, my last budget, my last annual budget, at least as the Mayor of Portland. I'm proud of the progress we've made, standing up successful programming to address critical issues in our community. I'm grateful to my colleagues on the City Council for their hard work, and I'm grateful to all of you for your continued support and guidance of our budget process. With that, I'll turn this back to Chair Kidos.
Thank you. I'll now call on any members of the public who would like to speak. Each person is limited to three minutes of public comment, and we'll let them know when they're nearing the end of their time. I don't think we have anybody signed up. Should someone join us during the meeting, we will try to provide space at the end. With that, we will dive into our questions and start the discussion. Matt, you have the first question.
Thank you, Chair. In response to voter-approved charter reform, City, as we know, is substantially restructuring operations and administration. Seems like a significant undertaking and more than we can cover in this hearing, given all the other things that we'd like to talk about. So we'd just like to hear specifically about the biggest challenges that the city is facing for this work. Hopefully, everyone sleeps well, but if there are things that keep you up at night, we can hear about those, and would like to address maybe the administrative soft opening that starts July 1 as part of this process.
I'll go ahead and answer this question. The voter-approved charter amendments include, of course, both elections as well as governance reforms, and the size and the scope of both are fairly significant. It's been challenging to coordinate and implement these changes within the very limited timeframe that we've been given and with the constrained resources that we've experienced during this period. That said, we are working diligently to ensure that the city delivers what the Portland community has required. As for what keeps me up at night, I think there's a couple of things. First of all, the importance of ensuring that Portlanders understand and are able to express their preference on the ballot using ranked choice voting, which is a new system. Many people are not familiar with this system. And number two, ensuring that the city is ready for both elected and executive leadership on January 1, 2025, that the mayor council form of government, and making sure that decision-making authorities are clear and that operations continue without any gaps in service. In order to mitigate those concerns, council prioritized updating the city's election code to align with the charter and ensured the software vendor had the maximum amount of time allotted for updates, certification, and testing. Additionally, we've made significant investments in voter education and partnerships with regional elections officials, specifically Multnomah County, as well as community-based organizations. As for the readiness and continuity of operations, on November 1 of 2024, City Council passed Resolution 37635, establishing the new administrative reporting structure, and subsequently adopted the classifications of the leadership team, including deputy city administrators and an assistant city administrator. The city administrators and deputy city administrators have been hired and begin by July 1 of 2024. Soft launching this reporting structure on July 1 allows our service areas to familiarize themselves with the new leadership structure, which will better align our workforce and work processes and help us identify where we may need to adjust. That said, the opportunities for service and programmatic involvement are limitless. I'm confident that the new elected and executive leadership will continue innovating, modernizing, and aligning to improve service delivery for Portlanders. I also want to put a word in on behalf of my colleagues on the City Council. They were elected to a form of government that had them serving in a role both as executive leaders as well as legislative leaders as members of the City Council. This transition requires them to give a lot, and I hope the public understands and acknowledges that during this transition period, my colleagues will be adapting to a new structure, the city leadership will be adapting to a new structure, and the culture, indeed, of our burrows and their relationship with the City Council will also need to evolve to get to the point where by January 1 of 2025, we have an organization that is up, that is running, where we have clarity of roles, and we have a clear understanding of the role of both the executive branch and the legislative branch. It is a tall order, and I thank my colleagues for the hard work they and their teams have already put into this and the hard work that we have ahead to make that difficult transition to a new form of government, both at the executive level and at the legislative level.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to drill down a little bit more into the new structure. This year, your budget requested at all bureaus other than Public Safety include a 5% constraint, which I assume is a reduction in their current service level, at least for a budgetary point of view, which is a reflection of that expenditures are rising faster than revenues. We know this is common among anybody in business or in local governments, and you are not alone in facing challenges of escalating costs. With the change to the new governance structure, do you see opportunities or consolidations that will achieve savings? And can you provide us any specific examples at this point—I know you're early on in the process—how this budget might show cost savings through the consolidation or simplification of services?
Yes, and I'll take this one as well. To clarify, the Portland Police Bureau, the Portland Fire and Rescue, and the Bureau of Emergency Communications were all held harmless to the 5% constraint. Other programs and bureaus within Public Safety did take a 5% constraint reduction. In regards to opportunities for savings, I do expect the new government structure to result in savings, but those savings will be generated over time, not immediately. The city has grown in silos, and as we bring those silos together under one city administrator, I expect that they will continue to identify duplicative efforts and operational inefficiencies. There's a tremendous opportunity to reevaluate the structure of our workforce and ensure that staff are delivering core services for Portlanders and working as efficiently as possible. We, of course, started this work during the fiscal year 2425 budget. For example, we have a unified communications team in the City Administrator's Office that will support the executive branch, and our goal is for them to provide a unified voice from the city to the public. Similarly, the unified permitting structure that Commissioner Rubio will talk about in her response is beginning to work on how to bring together permitting functions and look more closely at ways that we can be more efficient in that regard.
I have a follow-up. The 5% reduction, do we see that as a—do you see that as a one-time—we were talking to all of our big local governments, right? Multnomah County, Metro, the school districts. We're seeing tight budgets everywhere and not necessarily just a one-year situation. Are we—what is your impression about this 5% constraint? We had some additional revenue this year that kind of stabilized other things, but should the city—should residents expect kind of ongoing cuts the next few years? Or do we think there's a—maybe a stabilized structure in place?
I'll turn that over to my budget officer.
Yeah, sure. Sorry. Good morning. I'm Ruth Levine. I'm the interim Budget Director for the City of Portland. Good question. I think if you look just at the five-year financial forecast that our economist puts out in December—put out in December of 2023, you can see that our projected revenues and expenditures are quite close over the next four years, essentially. And then that's just sort of the baseline revenues and expenditures, right? Or the baseline expenditures. That doesn't account for other things that council has not necessarily addressed yet, right? So we know there are additional legal liabilities. So some of the things that we dealt with in the 2425 budget were legal liabilities facing us in this next fiscal year. We—there are still others outstanding that we know we will have to address in the coming years. In addition, there are other cost increases. So one we saw, for example, come about sort of late in the process was the increase in health benefit costs for the city. And so that has yet to be sort of incorporated into the budget in an ongoing way. We will have to do that in an ongoing way for '25, '26. So that represents another expense above the sort of—that red and green line. So all that put together is to say, I expect that at least for '25, '26, there will be some form of a reduction budget again. We don't know, of course, exactly what size or what form that will take, but I expect that, and I expect beyond that that things will be tight for a couple more years after that, before they sort of open up again in '28, '29.
Can I ask a follow-up on that, too? Do you see a—with the retirement of—I think it's four urban renewal districts next year, next fiscal year, that will mean more revenue, I would assume, to the city and the other jurisdictions? Does that help give you more of a cushion if you—if those districts were still in place? Is it a significant source of revenue?
In a sense, yes. So it's a bit complicated because the way that the—the way that the tax increment finance districts work is that while they're in place, that we are receiving that—the City of Portland is receiving that revenue, but it's dedicated, right? So it's dedicated to Prosper Portland and the Portland Housing Bureau, essentially. And—and as those districts sunset, the pie—that some of the revenue goes back to the other taxing districts, first of all, and so that revenue actually leaves the City of Portland. And then the portion that stays would return to our general fund. But so next fiscal year, beginning in '24, '25, council sort of agreed to send a portion of that returning revenue to Prosper and the Portland Housing Bureau. And the—in—through this budget process, they sort of articulated—each of those bureaus articulated how they would use that revenue. Some of that was repurposed in '24, '25 from the Portland Housing Bureau, but then it will go to them ongoing, at beginning—essentially, it will go back to them in '25, '26. So I guess, from that perspective, yes and no. Like, the—the—the revenue returns to our general fund, but we're still using it, and those bureaus are still operating, and they're changing a bit, but they are still operating. So—and then we do lose some portion of the revenue when the districts expire.
Thank you.
We're talking to Prosper next week, so all questions we will follow up with. Switching gears a little bit to talk about the new public camping ordinance. We'd like just some more information. What's the plan for enforcement? How much will it cost? What's the difference in cost based on the former ordinance? And what's the timeline for training the police bureau to enforce that ordinance? And really, when can the community start to see a difference and differential impact in our—in our spaces?
Yeah, good. Thank you for the question. And again, I want to be crystal clear that this time, place, manner ordinance is one of many different strategies that we're bringing to bear to address homelessness, all of which collectively will hopefully show fewer and fewer people living in unsanctioned camping on our streets. And so the time, place, manner ordinance came out of a state requirement created by House Bill 3115 for jurisdictions like ours that do enforcement to have reasonable time, place, and manner standards. And that's the genesis of this particular program. But I want to be clear that it has always been our objective to maintain public right-of-ways. And in fact, I've passed five different executive directors—directives over the last couple of years, addressing issues like camping on safe routes to school, in high-crash corridors, and in other areas of our city, followed up with enforcement mechanisms. Of course, there are other laws and rules that are on the books that we enforce separately. There are specific rules for our parks, for example. Those are also enforced. But I don't want to lose sight of the fact that it is not all on the enforcement side. We also created the task sites, the Safe Rest Villages, the outreach programs, the patrols we have with our police burrows who work in conjunction with social workers, contracts that we've established independently with outreach workers, all of which are intended to help people connect with whatever services they need to get off or stay off the streets. So this is not the only game in town. That said, in specific response to your question related specifically to the time, place, manner ordinance, my team, along with the Portland Police Bureau, have been working to develop procedures for enforcement of the new time, place, manner ordinance, which are consistent with our obligations under law. Enforcement under this ordinance will be part of the current camp cleanup and outreach system, which is led by the Street Services Coordination Center, which I created under executive— executive directive two years ago. That existing process will not change. Standard operating procedures are being finalized, and staff will be trained before the enforcement begins, starting in July. The only change is that P P B's Neighborhood Response Team officers, who already work with the Street Services Coordination Center, will now have the legal authority to cite or arrest individuals as a last resort if they are violating the ordinance. Enforcement of this ordinance will not add any new costs to the city's current investments in responding to homelessness.
Thank you. And I, we've asked the last several years, you know, when's the public going to see change in the area of homelessness? And when are we, when do we get the ball rolling? And I think we all experience it every day, and certainly our houseless neighbors are still facing a significant, significant barriers. I think, for me at least, this is a good, like, checkpoint every year, right? Like a point of reflection. And I've said this to the county and Metro as well. I do think we're starting to see real progress in the city, and I just want to acknowledge all of those different mechanisms do seem to, you know, and a one-year checkpoint for me certainly feels like, and I think that's reflected in our discussion questions, too, that the ball's rolling and work is being done, and there's a swath of services being provided. So I just want to acknowledge that.
I can tell you with confidence, Chair, that the programs are effective. They are working. The situation on our streets is improving. The public is seeing that improvement. We're seeing increased activation, increased economic activity. And I believe, just anecdotally, based on what I hear from people who've recently been in town for conventions and other large group gatherings, that the situation has improved markedly. We've seen not only improvements around the cleanliness of our streets through the creation of the Portland Environmental Management Office, the work we've done to get people connected to service through tasks and SRV, but also the litter and graffiti abatement through P M O, the increased patrols that we've put into place for the Portland Police Bureau, the significant reductions in crime statistics that we've seen citywide. Remarkable declines in criminal activity year over year, and certainly over the course of the last two years in the city of Portland. The bottom line for me is the city of Portland has turned around. The recovery is already well underway. The trends are strongly in our favor. But as we know from recent polling, public perception lags reality. That should be no surprise to any of us. So what that means from a budgetary perspective is we cannot back off now. We have to keep investing in these systems that we have established over a period of a number of years that are showing results, and we need to double down and to continue to support them. And that's not really my message to you. That's my message to the future city council, which has not been elected yet. They need to stay the course. Things have turned around. This team has worked really hard to make the changes, make the investments we need to make. And the challenge really isn't balancing this budget. That's pretty much done from my perspective. It's making sure that we continue to invest in the programs going forward, like Portland Solutions, like the Street Services Coordination Center, like tasks, like SRV, like the outreach teams, like the public safety enhancements that we've put into place, like the environmental management program that we put into place to address litter and graffiti. We have to keep moving forward and doubling down on the good results that we're already seeing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mark.
We're going to switch over to the Portland Clean Energy Fund now and talk about how well it's doing. It's outperformed expectations. Congratulations on that. Code changes have allowed for bureaus now to receive some of that P S F money, and we see those funds for programs in several different bureau budgets. With funding spread across those budgets, how will you remain accountable to taxpayers and report accurately on the usage and the impact of those funds?
So I'll take that question. We are actively working on ensuring city bureaus are accountable in their use of P S F, P S F funds in three primary ways. The first is programmatic agreements. So we're working with each bureau to develop programmatic agreements that clearly outline project scopes, eligible use of funds, and project outcomes in alignment with P S F program, P S F program objectives. So bureaus will be required to meet the terms of these agreements to continue receiving P S F funding. The second is our reporting systems. In partnership with the city budget office, we are developing new reporting systems and aligning bureau reporting on P S F expenditures as part of the city's annual performance reporting. And then third, through dashboard integration, we're working with bureaus to design and integrate their reporting outcomes in a manner that will roll up into P S F's broader outcomes. So these outcomes, such as lifetime G H G emissions reduced or sequestered, and also the percentage of expenditures to M W E S B contractors, these things will be part of P S F's public dashboard. So this is one of the most publicly vetted funds in the city, and we're also confident that these additional important steps will keep us in consistent alignment through the administration of these funds and further reporting transparency on city uses of these funds while holding us accountable to P S F's mission and objectives.
Thank you. So that addresses accountability in the bureaus. We're also interested in the community organizations that might be competing for P S F dollars. If the bureaus are getting, I don't know if it's the lion's share, but I would assume it's quite a bit, is the community still organizations that would be applying for these funds? Are they, are they anyway disadvantaged because the bureaus are taking a larger, you know, portion of that money?
No. In fact, that is the priority, and, and the community partnership, responsive grants and partnerships are in the, the investment portfolio, and that is the priority always. Anything above those funding is what gets considered afterward.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Along the lines of the community organizations piece, I have a question. I, I'm an organizational development consultant and do a lot of work with community-based organizations, including those that have been recipients of P S F funds in the past, not this year, so no conflict. But my question is, sometimes organizations receive funds and they're not necessarily ready to take those in. There might be some issues with capacity, or staffing, or anxiety about reporting, all sorts of things. So I'm wondering, from the P S F side, what type of capacity building or technical assistance is available for organizations to access if they need those resources?
We like to think of P S F as, it's, it's a startup, right? And so we are also building our internal capacity to support those community-based organizations, and I would, I would offer that that's the first thing that they did. So we have actually very robust supports for organizations who are just starting out and having to build their capacity through smaller, more accessible planning grants so that they can be ready for a larger investment down the road.
Okay. Great. So since its inception in 2021, funding for Portland street response has varied, but the program appears to have staying power, and I think Mayor's comments suggested the hope is that it continues to have staying power through the transition. And as you spoke about, it's seeing real results. But can you talk more about how you're measuring results for this program, and, and what does the, the data tell us about the effectiveness?
I think I'll take that one. P S R has a place now and in the future for the region. Over the last year of operations, as we shifted part of its focus, the metrics have shifted a bit as well. Initially, we were focused on number of responses and reduction in response times, which is a key metric in Public Safety, just how long it takes to get someone out the door on-site. But P S R's role has evolved a bit, and it's deepened its partnership with CHAT, which is our community health assess and treat team inside of Portland Fire. We'll get into some of those specifics here in a second, but at a high level, there's a very clear role for P S R in proactive outreach, in connection to services, in addition to the pre-existing non-police response de-escalation, first responder role. So with respect to the partnership they're doing with CHAT, that is what we call buprenorphine, which is very important in assisting people in withdrawal from opioid disorder. And it's a partnership with Multnomah County Public Health, and P S R is doing a lot of the after-care, follow-up. So we respond to an overdose on the streets. We resurrect, resuscitate with Narcan, try to get them enrolled in the buprenorphine, and then P S R comes in to do some of the after-care and support. Very, very important, because it's a long journey in opioid disorder recovery. Going forward, at least as of right now, we're going to continue to measure the number of calls they respond to, but also connection to services. What's the next step? Because it can't just be triage, in a sense. We've got to get them, you know, folks into the system, in the pipeline for recovery. But we will continue also to track just number of overdose resuscitations using Narcan and after-care visits, which are necessary inputs to get people through the system. P S R does have dashboards. Those are publicly available in our public safety dashboard area on, on our website. But those metrics will continue to evolve as we, we shift a little bit, some of the focus of the program.
Thank you. Follow up to that is, what are the plans for long-term sustainability of this program? Or what would be the challenges to long-term sustainability?
Well, the biggest initial challenge to the program is it was stood up with a great deal of one-time money. ARPA, we had some opioid and cannabis dollars floating through there, and those were going to burn off. And I have deep appreciation for the mayor and his proposed budget, proposed ongoing dollars for that program. That is, stabilizes a great deal. We had to make some tough choices last year because we weren't sure what the funding looked like going forward. Makes it harder to make personnel decisions when you don't know if you're hiring someone whose position's going to expire next year. It's been stabilized. So that's a, a very positive thing. P S R was set up initially inside of Portland Fire. They've done a solid job incubating the program, bringing it to sort of the standards of a city program, not just a startup, you actually have to comply with certain, you know, the stuff that everyone else in the city has to comply with kind of rules. But effective July 1, they're moving to the program and Policy Division inside of the Public Safety Service Area. It's kind of a reflection of their maturation, and also the need to work with some of the other public safety bureaus more directly going forward. So that change will be effective July 1. Again, I want to thank Portland Fire for successfully incubating the program, but that will be a shift as of July. We also, when we're talking about long-term funding for the program, the potential for Medicaid funding was a big part of the original promise. There are challenges in the current legal framework and in terms of legal, the infrastructure inside the city to obtain those dollars. So on the, on the Medicaid side, we're working with Senator Wyden's office to update some pieces of the CAHoots Act that was originally an attempt to open up the door to behavioral health for Medicaid. Those dollars have not really flowed out nationally at the scale people were really hoping. To my knowledge, there's no program in Oregon that's qualified for that as of yet, even the original CAHoots program in Eugene. And it has to do with the kind of, what people, some people call demographic data you have to gather from people that enroll in Medicaid. I think of it as, you know, personally, personal medical records. That's very difficult to obtain from people and with acute behavioral health issues, particularly in crisis on the streets of Portland. That makes it very hard to go and seek reimbursement. So we need some technical help there, probably at the Fed level. O H A is also looking at what they can do to better support programs at the state level getting Medicaid reimbursement. And then within the city, we don't currently have a Medicaid billing structure. The county does, because they have a long history of Medicaid billing, and that's a necessary investment of an infrastructure that I don't think, when P S R was really stood up, people thought through that piece. Doesn't mean it's insurmountable. It's, you know, it's a system that other people have figured out how to stand up. But if, if P S R is going to stay in the city long-term, that's something we're going to have to figure out to build. And there sort of begs the question, is it efficient to build Medicaid billing for just one program in the city? Do you look to the county to, you know, to partner on that billing? So there's some architecture questions, and it's not on the operations side. This is the core financial and billing side of it that we still, there's still work to be done on mapping that out. But I'm, I'm, I think everyone should feel good about where it sits. Again, we have ongoing funding that's going to stabilize this existing operations, and in the coming years, we have to look at how we can grow the pie with outside dollars.
Thank you.
I have a logistical question. So I, I understand the administrative move outside of the Fire Bureau. I don't, and I don't know, so appreciate the dumb question. The, like, the dispatch of our street response agents, will that still be housed within kind of the emergency services from firehouses or from, I don't know where they come from? I'm just curious what that, how that partnership looks, even though the administrative shift is different.
So there won't really be a shift in how dispatch will occur. That can still be made either through 911 or non-emergency, which is your 823-3333. I will say that again, because everyone will remember the non-emergency number, 823-3333. Either of those ways can lead to dispatch of Portland Street Response. That won't change in the future. That, nothing's changing there. Their physical locations aren't really tied to what bureau they're part of. They have two primary locations right now. A physical, it's not in firehouses. For a long time, they were actually renting space from the fire union as a, as a, as a setup. But that's not necessarily impacted by where they sit in the bureau. There are a lot of deep ties on the backend between particularly CHAT and P S R. There are certain personnel that are, kind of can float between the two, particularly our E M Ts, which are our first-level medical. We have E M Ts in both P S R and CHAT, and those are highly sought-after resources, are as are paramedics. And so there's going to be some, there's some work to kind of decouple those. That's, there's going to be some, you know, any kind of reorg is going to require some of that. And, but it, it won't affect frontline operations in any material way.
Thanks. That's helpful.
I have an old four-square house in Portland that needs a lot of work, and so I'm interested in permitting. So this is going to be a permitting question for you all. Last year, you shared a goal to have a unified, and the, and the mayor talked about this a little in his introductory remarks. Thank you. Permitting a unified permitting service entity by the end of the fiscal year. Can you share the status of that project? And what has been done to date, and what is left still to do?
I'll take that question. Thank you for the question. On May 29, 2024, the city council approved the ordinance, making an official Portland permitting and development bureau or office. And this is an important step in establishing the first iteration of a new unified permitting bureau, bringing together permitting functions from five different bureaus, Development Services, Environmental Services, Parks, specifically Urban Forestry, Transportation, and Water. This is a significant milestone in our ongoing efforts to continuously improve and enhance the service we provide to our community. And the Permit Improvement Team, or PIT for short, is a big part of this work to date, and will continue to play a lead role in moving forward. So we appreciate their work to hold the vision over the many moving parts. Establishing the Portland permitting and development is a crucial first step, but there's still a lot of work ahead. As we move forward, our focus will include refining permitting processes and workflow, improving customer support, establishing a sustainable funding model, aligning code and policy, and ensuring connections to teams that are not part of the new bureau, or ensuring those connections remain and are strengthened to teams that are not part of the new bureau but are essential to its success. A stable and sustainable funding model is also a really key piece of the success of this Portland- A stable and sustainable funding model is also a really key piece of the success of this Portland permitting and development. And through a budget note in the approved budget, council directed a work group to explore and implement strategies aimed at reducing operational costs and increasing efficiency. So the work group will evaluate technology utilization and assess current operational practices to identify potential cost saving measures, ways to recuperate partner bureau costs and process efficiency improvements. And additionally, Portland permitting and development has been directed to evaluate and revise its reserve policy to extend the financial safety net, ensuring greater stability and operational continuity during those extended periods of economic uncertainty like we're experiencing right now. So it's our hope that this time next year, we'll see results from a lot of this work. That will move us to that, to that vision of that unified system.
And I'll miss that because I won't be here. Okay, thank you. Please, please do. Follow up on that. So is permitting, I'm just curious about this because I watch so much of the affordable housing being built in my neighborhood. Is the permitting process as it currently is, does that create a barrier to affordable housing development?
It does in the, in the, in the view that time is money. And so it's even harder on affordable housing processes when the process takes so long. So we believe that this will ultimately help cut costs in that respect. And there are also some exceptions or waivers that they can apply for, very specific to the project.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's a follow up too. If I may ask a follow up that wasn't on the prepared questions. Permitting has been an issue for a long, long time, dating back to my time in Portland, which was in the early 2000s. And I guess my question is, how will this one be successful when other attempts to streamline permitting have had some, some barriers in the past?
I think two ways, and then I'll turn it to the mayor because he's had the longest tenure on council. But two ways that I see it. One, we have a unified council that is aligned around our idea that we need to change the system. So that I think is, you know, we might have different ideas about how to do that. But our vision about a system unification down the road is, is, there's alignment there. The second thing is that we have a historic change in government coming. So we're going to have a city manager and that is unprecedented. And I think that all those things lend to a different approach and a new landscape, which, for which this would be ideally set up to be successful. So I don't know, mayor, if you.
I thought you answered it perfectly. I mean, the bottom line is for the first time ever, we have a backstop. And the backstop is that we'll have an executive form of government that can do a lot of this administratively. So a lot of the politics that's bogged things down for the last 20 plus years. And I actually have heard it goes back even farther than the early 2000s. The reality is there's just a lot of people with a lot of different interests that have a stake in the process. And people care deeply here about a lot of different issues that may have an impact on the speed and the cost of the housing permit system. But I agree with everything Commissioner Rubio said.
Yeah, I just want to jump in and add on to that. When we started the task force, and that was with Commissioner Maps, we actually included all of the offices at the political level. And we included all of the bureaus that were mentioned, in addition to Fire was there and BPS. So we started off with everybody being in. And all the other forms before this, we're going all through BDS. In addition, this is a key point. If you recall in the budget from three years ago, our office sponsored positions of technical assistants, continuous improvement experts, cat herders. So we wouldn't be here if we didn't have them in the budget the last three years poking and probing this along. As you probably know, when elected officials make decisions without strategic implementation of the work, then nothing really moves. So you're seeing implementation that's been going on for about three to four years.
We look forward to talking about this next year.
I'm going to switch gears to talk about PBOB. And the renewal of the gas tax will hopefully provide some relief for PBOB in the short term by not further widening the gap between revenues and expenditures. However, it's our sense that the gas tax continuation isn't going to be enough to solely solve fiscal issues. So we're wondering, what is the current status of PBOB? And if you can share maybe like a five year forecast?
Sure. Thank you for the question. And you're exactly right. You know, first, I want to thank the voters of Portland for renewing fixing our streets. It's also important to remember that renewing fixing our streets doesn't bring new dollars into the bureau. Instead, it just provides a continuation of a funding source that PBOB's relied on since 2016. So even with the renewal of fixing our streets, PBOB faces a structural funding problem. And that structural funding problem basically boils down to this. We largely fund our transportation system here in Portland through two sources, gas taxes and parking fees. And as you can imagine, because of a lot of changes in our society, electric cars, for example, and working from home, funds from both of those sources are in steep decline. Now, that dynamic brought PBOB a $32.4 million deficit heading into this next fiscal year. Let me take a moment to explain to you how PBOB went about closing this $32.4 billion shortfall in the budget that we're talking about today. Now, first, the bureau allocated about $7 million from fixing our streets to restore funding reductions in paving maintenance and signal and street light maintenance. So thank goodness we have those funds. If not, you know, that would be a $7 million hole that we'd be talking about today. In addition, the bureau used about $8 million in Portland Clean Energy Funds to restore funding reductions to Sunday parkways, safer schools, the transportation wallet, street car replacement funds, and funding for pedestrian and bike network improvements. So we're deeply grateful for our friends over at the Clean Energy Fund for that support. In addition, the bureau increased staffing for parking enforcement, which allowed us to increase the number of patrols in meter districts. And we were able to add resources to pursue out of compliance vehicle registrations. Now, those actions are expected to increase revenues by about $5.5 million. Furthermore, the bureau increased parking meter rates by 20 cents. And we induced those increases to inflation moving forward. So that's a constructive, forward looking reform. We also implemented a fee for users who pay for parking with a credit card. And those efforts are expected to increase revenues by $5.3 million. And finally, the bureau took some difficult cuts, about $6.7 million in programmatic reductions and administrative support, paving maintenance, fleet costs, planning, parking policy and programming issues. Now, let me be clear. These efforts solve PBOB's shortfall for the coming fiscal year, the one that starts in July. There's still liabilities and risk to the forecast that are going to need to be addressed in 2024 or 2025, 2026. For example, let's take our Americans with Disability Curb Ramp Program. Over the next year, six years, we have about a $30 million shortfall in that space. In addition, funding for the moving the city's fleet services to a new location was approved in this budget that we're talking about today. But that decision also increases costs to PBOB for fleet services by about $3.2 million moving forward. On top of that, health benefits have gotten more expensive. We expect that to increase our costs by about $1.6 million. So let me roughly sum up where we are in the space. You know, PBOB faces a lot of challenges. We have all the new costs that I listed above. And in addition to that, you know, we have some of the cost savings that I talked about in the first part of my comments. And finally, there are some unknowns out there that have yet to reveal themselves. For example, this next legislative section 2025 will largely focus on transportation issues. We expect new proposals to come out of that discussion. And what the legislature comes up with around transportation funding package will have huge implications for how we go about helping Portlanders get to where they want to go.
Thank you. It sounds like, given some of the parking pieces in terms of like additional revenue, and then you're also looking towards the legislature, are there other areas that you're looking at longer term, sustainability areas of revenue?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be transparent. We're still looking for a stable, a stable and sustainable funding model for PBOB. In my time on council or having this portfolio, we've explored another of, a number of options. We continue to look at things like a street utility fee, a street damage restoration fee. You know, talking to our state partners about increasing DMV fees or state gas taxes. You know, I still frankly believe the ultimate solution to this problem is going to be a vehicle miles travel tax. We have a pilot program statewide for that. We just kind of need to scale up that program by a factor of about 1,000, which is no small feat. And we're even looking at things like bike registration fees. Now, I'll point out that all the things I talked about, the street utility fee, the street restoration fee, DMV fees, state gas taxes, vehicle mile travel tax, even a bike registration fee. These are all ambitious ideas that frankly, PBOB can't do alone. In order to move forward with any one of those things, we either have to have action by council or action by state legislatures or action by the federal government. And frankly, in some situations, like the vehicle miles travel tax, we might even need some action by the private sector. Now, the good news is we are literally in constant contact with our partners down in Salem, trying to put together a transportation package that will support the operation and maintenance of our transportation system moving forward. Sure.
If you were to look in your crystal ball, Commissioner Maps, do you think there's an appetite to look at the vehicle mile traveled kind of fee, especially for e cars? Do you think there's the political will to do that? I know this is not unique to the city of Portland at all.
Oh, no, absolutely. And you know, given our climate goals, you know, we know, we have made the decision that we're going to move off of the fossil fuel powered personal vehicle, you know, real, within a very short period of time. You know, 15 years or so. So we clearly have to move away from the gas tax. I think the smart people in the transportation space seem to think that the tool moving forward is going to be a vehicle miles travel tax. We actually have a pilot program for this here in the state of Oregon, Orgo. Right now, I think we got about 3,000 cars enlisted in that program. In order to make this work, we have to scale that up to about 3 million cars. So, you know, that's the dynamic that we're working in. I know this is a topic of rich and continuous conversation in the state legislature. It's also a truly challenging time. We know that this is a new tax, even though it's kind of replacing a tax that we know is going to be sunsetting practically in the matter of coming years. So we have a window of about 10 years, I would say, where we can figure something out. I surely expect that our partners in Salem to begin to ramp up and scale up our vehicle miles travel tax program. But we really have to go from currently where we're at is 3,000 cars. Our target is 3 million cars. And we have all seen state government and local governments really struggle with that kind of scaling projects. But I think that's the work ahead for the next decade.
Good luck.
Thank you. Good luck to all of us.
I have another question. Again, switching gears to the climate investment plan. So we see that the city's climate investment plan includes a 2035 goal for a $40 million investment in the Equitable Tree Canopy Program. What are some tangible impacts we can expect to see from this program? And maybe some metrics in place to measure if these dollars are spent equitably? And also, how are you ensuring long term success and stewardship of the trees, especially ongoing costs and maintenance, perhaps to homeowners that may have the trees along their streets?
Thank you, Allison, and welcome to the committee. I'll take that question. The city of Portland is making historic investments in urban forest. And this will be good for people's health first and foremost, and of course, for the environment. The Equitable Tree Canopy Program will result in at least 15,000 new trees planted primarily in priority areas of Portland where there's a low tree canopy at the current moment. Think east Portland predominantly. A community advisory group of Portland residents is being formed to provide guidance on the program, including the optimal performance metrics to be used. Currently, the planned performance metrics include the number of trees planted, of course, the diversity of the tree species, the number of partnerships, and the number of trees planted in geographic priority areas. And to your point that you mentioned about maintenance, young tree mortality. These performance metrics are similar to those used in Portland's current tree planting programs. Equitable Tree Canopy Program will maintain technical standards for tree planting, such as stock quality and planting technique and establishment care of young trees. Again, these standards will be informed by a community advisory board. And it should be noted that an additional budget allocation from the Portland Clean Energy Funding, the city of Portland is also developing a comprehensive street tree care and maintenance program, which will shift the responsibility of street maintenance from the adjacent property owner to the city, as well as a program to provide financial assistance for residents to care for trees on their property outside of the street trees.
Thank you.
When I was at Portland State, Vivek Shandis, one of our professors, was doing a lot of work on this. The equitable distribution of trees for shade, controlling temperatures, climate change, that sort of thing. Will PSU have a role in this? Just curious.
Well, I'm going to actually ask Jen Cairo to come up. She is the head of our urban forestry program. And if I got a question that I wasn't 100% sure of the answer of, I was going to call her up. I'm so glad you're here, Jen.
Using a lifeline.
Yeah. Honest government.
Good morning all, I'm Jen Cairo, the City Forester. And yes, Dr. Shandis has been on our forestry commission. He was the chair for a while and we work closely with him in the PSU lab as well as his own research company. And we'll continue to do that. An example of that is when we measure overall canopy extent in the city of Portland, we compare our results with Dr. Shandis' team results as well as with the county and metro's results.
I'll ask another stone leaf. We talked to East Multnomah Soil and Water a couple of weeks ago. And they have a big rep, unpaving program that they work with. They're working with Mount Hood Community College to unpave a bunch of parking lots, partially to add not just drainage, but tree canopy and things like that. Obviously, this is not a one size fits all solution, you know, planting a tree on the street. But I'm curious, what other partnerships are you building out to kind of continue this, this big, big work?
Thank you for that question. There are many active partnerships in trees in the city. And when we talk about urban forestry for decades now, we've also called it community forestry because it is very much based on partnerships and folks appreciating trees and having the information and the resources to do well by their trees. So those partnerships are broad and many, specific to the Equitable Tree Initiative, Equitable Tree Canopy Initiative. We just started working with four new community groups as contractors to advance that tree planting, the 15,000 trees, new trees that will go into the ground. And those groups are Centennial Community Association, Green Lentz, the Portland Alumni Chapter of June Key Delta, and Taking Ownership. We intend to have more of those going forward. Our current work is really focused on making contracting with the city for tree planting and establishment, for example, more accessible to more companies, smaller companies, emerging small business, and also minority owned businesses.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Another question on infrastructure, my favorite topic too.
Me too.
Bull Run Filtration Plant. You have a couple of challenges there. One is the, the price of the project now is somewhere in the $2 billion range. It's gone a little further north and again, not unique to the city of Portland. Everybody's struggling with, with paying for infrastructure and, and the current economic environment for those costs. And the other part is having some challenges with the adjacent neighbors and working with them to site the plant in the city owned property there. One is how will you pay for the, how will the city pay for the cost increases? And will that be borne by the ratepayers or are there other alternatives for funding for a portion of that cost? And second, how are you continuing to work with the adjacent neighbors?
Great questions, Todd. And thank you for asking about this important project. Well, first, let's talk about how we go about paying for the Bull Run Filtration Project. Here's one way to think about it. You know, the capital stack for the filtration project comes from two sources. We have water revenue. We have water revenue bonds, and we have Federal Water Infrastructure and Finance Innovation Act funding, i.e., our WIFI loan. Some good news here, we've been invited to apply for a second WIFI loan. So we have those two primary sources, which will provide the sort of big bucket of money that we're using to build this project. Now, in turn, retail and wholesale customers will pay for debt services on the revenue bonds and the WIFI loans. Now, moving forward, you know, should we see costs increase in this project over time, we can hold to our current rate forecast by basically making adjustments to our capital programs. So if we see costs increase, costs for this project increase. If we spread out, when we build new capital projects, we can afford to actually stay within our rate forecast. And that is our goal and plan moving forward. Now, in addition to the sort of financial challenges here, we also have the challenges of being a good neighbor as you're going about building a rather large project in a predominantly rural community. Now, one of the things that's been a top priority for me and for the bureau is to work with all the property owners who are located around the filtration project. Now, for the duration of this project, the bureau will update stakeholders and work collaboratively with stakeholders around issues raised by property owners. We've been doing that a lot. Now, for example, towards that end, the project team has regular contact with stakeholders. You know, our updates include quarterly meetings. We share information via email, the bureau websites. We even do monthly coffees with contractors. So we're trying to bring everyone at the table as we move forward this very important public health project.
I'm glad to hear you're using WIFI, and I'm familiar with that program. And it has some real benefits, particularly the timing of paying back the loans.
It's been a real life saver in this situation. I'll point out, this is our second WIFI loan. And a vote of confidence in this project is that the federal government reached out to us, I think literally about a month ago, and invited us to... We already have one WIFI loan in the books, and they've offered and encouraged us to apply for a second WIFI loan. So things are looking really good in this space.
Do you need to acquire additional private property to build the plant? Or do you have the physical footprint now? It's just the...
In some situations, we need to gain sometimes permanent, sometimes temporary access to trim trees or whatnot, or run pipelines. We have, for the most part, though, you know, we have our big footprint. And then as you add the infrastructure around this, you know, as part of this project, for example, we're doing some road improvements, and we'll have to lay some pipes. And there's some easements that we need to negotiate there. We've actually had very good luck working through all those agreements. I think the last time I checked, we had them all resolved except for one, and that was a week or so ago. So we might have even made some progress in the meantime.
Great, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Okay, I think that finishes our questions for today. We do have someone signed up for public comment, so I do want to give an opportunity for that. I think it's Bridge Crane.
Yep.
Well, you'll have three minutes for your comments, and we'll let you know when you're nearing the end of your time.
Happy Pride, y'all. Nice to see the flags around here. Reminds me I need to go by City Hall and see if the place that you all can't work in has some Pride flags in the window. At one time, you did a great job with Pride flags in the windows of the Rotunda area. So it turns out, when we sit here and look at the five of y'all that will almost indubitably pass this budget, that 80% of y'all are re-electable, or seeking to be re-electable. And that come January, there'll be 12, or maybe, if Mr. Ryan is lucky, 11 new faces here. And I hope that as we get into the election season and you finish up wrapping up the budget, you'll talk more about percentages and deltas for some of the most critical issues facing our community. And I think, of course, the biggest one is that we're allowing Chinese chemical companies and Mexican cartels to kill people in this city at three, four, five times the rate that it used to happen. And so when a problem surges, there needs to be a proportionate surge in public safety and health spending. And of course, Oregon voters have built ourselves a problem because we spread responsibility for that over the OHA at the state and this public safety portfolio that Mr. Renee has, and the county. And the county is not responding with clarity or metrics that are going to help us save lives. And I know that that's not a huge area that you have impacted. But I hope maybe Commissioner Gonzalez has some insight as a way to have a city where people aren't dropping dead at the rate of 30 people per month from fentanyl, which is making our area lose population and lose economic security. And then on that metrics issue, there's the still-not-quite-resolved, to say the least, homelessness crisis and the difficulty of you finding metrics that you can even communicate honestly with us about how many people really live on the street, and how many hundreds or thousands of people are triple, double, quadruple stacked in the apartments and homes of friends. For a long time, since way before Mayor Wheeler, going back before Steve Novick gave us the gas tax, some public money has paid for HMIS. And you still have not been able to tweak the HMIS system or build a by-name registry that really gives your service providers data that you can use to fund and adjust programs. You know, I think it's been good to see the task's success at Clinton Triangle. But we'd like to see, when the budget's talked about, I think many of your constituents, besides myself, would like to see a match to, this is a huge problem, this is appropriately change in spending. So thank you very much, and I feel like you're doing a more robust process and better results than at some of the other local jurisdictions.
Thank you very... Thank you, thank you. Are you back? Thank you so much for your testimony. It will be entered into our public record and also taken into account when we review the city's budget, but also the budgets of all the other jurisdictions that we consider. With that, I want to thank the city council and the mayor for your thoughtful contributions to today's discussion, your candor with us as we ask our many follow-up questions. We appreciate this opportunity to engage with you about the city's budget. With that, I will close the hearing and open a regular business meeting of the TSCC. Commissioners, do you have any additional thoughts on the budget?
Uh, no.
Okay, so thanks, Mark. Allegra, would you please share the staff recommendation for the certification letter?
Yes, I'd be happy to. First, thank you to city staff for their partnership, not only through the budget process, but throughout the year. We so appreciate you taking the time to answer our questions, as well as proactively reaching out to just make sure that the city work is in compliance with budget law throughout the year. So thank you very much for that. We, as staff, found the budget estimates to be reasonable for the purposes stated and substantial compliance with budget law. Staff suggests no recommendations or objections to the fiscal year '24, '25 approved budget.
Thank you, Allegra. May I have a motion authorizing the commission to sign the certification letter as recommended by staff?
I'll move to have that done.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 The city of Portland budget is so certified by TSCC, Allegra will quickly follow up with a signed letter of certification. And I will officially adjourn our meeting. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.